Can you call the board? Roll call, please.
Nancy Kupka.
Present.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Pavanado.
Here.
Don Renner.
Here.
Eleanor Flynn.
Here.
And Kirk Hoffman.
Present.
We have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need a motion to have approval of minutes for the April 15, 2019 business meeting and the April 15, 2019 closed meeting.
So moved.
Don and Terry.
Thank you. Don Renner.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Very soon. Moving on to students' perspectives.
Janice.
Okay, so I'm excited to bring to you several of our students and one of our teachers who participated in a shadowing experience. So I am going to let Riley explain what happened here. But Riley Hornia is one of our seniors, and she came to me, gosh, it was actually before winter break, to talk about this possibility. And it took us a while to put it together. But then we put together these six, well, six students. You'll see some of them here tonight. And then Ms. Blatner. So you're going to hear from them about their experience. So Riley, I'll have you start.
Hi. So as she said, my name is Riley Hornia. I just want to point out, we do all go to Downers Grove North, but we are wearing the Moren uniforms because they gave us these so we could all match with them when we went there. And a couple of them are wearing the polos they gave us. And they were kind enough to let us keep the uniforms, so. But yes, before winter break, I came to Ms. Schwartz with an idea I got from our Attorney General, Kwame Raul, actually. I met him at an event last year, and I asked him, how do, how could I help to get rid of stereotypes and generalizations? You know, things that happen when kids don't understand each other, don't get the chance to communicate with each other that often. And especially when it came to us living in the suburbs and students that lived in the city. Our lifestyles are really different, you know, our locations, the demographics of schools, everything. The way we get to school itself is just very different. And a lot of the things I would hear in the hallway would just be so interesting. Kids thinking it's cool to be ghetto, or to use the N-word, or to just do all of these things that they thought were cool, even though kind of in the city it's not. Or how students in the city would think that we were all incredibly uptight, incredibly rich, don't have to work for certain things. All of these things that come from not understanding each other and not being able to properly communicate with each other or get the chance to ever meet each other. So I asked him, how can I fix that? How can I work on making, improving those relations and making it better? And he gave me the idea of an exchange program to find a school kind of in the city, maybe on the outside of the city, and just stand in each other's shoes for a day. Because that's the only way that we could ever really understand each other. So I came to Ms. Schwartz with the idea, and she suggested Moren East. Because they're doing a lot of the same things as us. They're building, is undergoing renovations. They're in our conference. We play each other. You know, our sports teams meet up all the time. And so we just started planning. And from there, that, like, our experience completely exceeded my expectations. It was absolutely amazing. The things we were able to learn from them and the things they were able to learn from us were just incredible. And it was awesome to see the way that the kids all interacted. Like, Ms. Schwartz said, kind of, that the first five minutes in the room together, we met in our alumni room, they were kind of awkward, but then within maybe the next 10 or 15 minutes, everybody was just talking. And then by the end of the day, it was like we were all really close. And we were all super excited to see each other. Ariana, as exchange student, actually remembered it was her birthday and got her a bunch of candy the day that we went to Moren East and bought her like a candy bag for her birthday. It was just really sweet to see. And we exchanged a lot of ideas. Like, for example, they loved our Wellness Wednesdays that we do at our school. And they suggested them that they're principal. And I really liked that they were having debates where their government students actually wrote out legislation and were debating it on the stage in their auditorium. And their gov classes were voting on it. And that was just a really cool thing to watch and to see students get to do that. And another, like, it was just amazing to see, you know, those experiences and those exchanges that we were able to have. And, sorry. No, it's fine. Don't worry about it. And it was just amazing. And the students said that they were really able to feel, the Moren East students said they were able to feel the culture of unity and the connectedness that our student body especially was kind of dealing with and experiencing after everything that happened, you know, with Beth, my teammate. And they said they really felt that, how we all came together after that. And they really could see that the administration, the student body, that everybody got along super well. And they really loved to see that relationship. And so we were able to work and discuss all the different ways that we were the same. And we were able to get rid of a lot of assumptions and biases that we all had going into it. We learned really valuable lessons. And now our next step is just to work on sharing all the things we learned with the rest of the student body and kind of preparing this program for students who go in the future, in the next couple of years. And just really figuring out how to take everything we learned and our experiences and share it out with the rest of the student body. So a couple of other students had things that they wanted to share that they learned and got from their students. So I'd like to invite them up now, as well as Ms. Blatner, who shadowed a teacher for the day, so.
So we have two sophomores, two juniors, and two seniors. That way, we do not send any freshmen because Morton has a separate freshman campus. So representatives from each district are supposed to.
Hi, I'm Jalen. I'm a sophomore at DGN. So I want to share that at, when the student from Morton came to our school, that what stuck out to me was that he said that my second period US history, like, seemed like a movie to him, like, out of High School Musical. And I just thought that was like, you know, like crazy to me because I go there every day. But then it was like kind of eye-opening at the same time because I realized that it's not like, not the same, like, demographic-wise and stuff like that. And that kind of stuck out to me also, him saying how he felt like our school was a bond. Like, Tori said, like, after we lost Beth, that he felt like we all came together as one, stuff like that. Also, when we went there, he, he was kind of explaining to me how, like, his school just didn't have, like, the same community that our school did. And it's like, kind of, because of, like, the size of the school and, I don't know, the issues that they kind of have a little bit. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Ariana. I'm a junior. And Diana was my partner from Moren East, and she was also a junior. And one thing that really stuck me out was she came to the school and she thought for me being a Mexican, I was going to be very stuck-up, very, like, in her words, very white, which was really kind of weird. But she thought it was pretty cool that a girl that's white and that goes to Downers Grove North is pushing forward to get to, like, to, like, go to college. And she really liked that we have all these resources. And I brought her to my child development classroom, and she really loved it. You know, all the kids were super nice. And like, all my friends were talking to her, like, if they knew her for years. So she was really shocked that everybody in this community was, was really nice and really, like, not pushed back towards. And she noticed that everybody's there for everybody, even though, like, we don't know one another. And when I went to Moren East, I thought it was really cool that, you know, like, some teachers and the principal are pushing so hard to, like, reconstruct the, like, the school and, like, make it better for them. And they have so many resources that they can use. And I thought it was really cool to just see, like, the perspective of each, both of them. And like, going to a whole Mexican school, I thought it was really cool to just see, like, knowing my whole race over there. So I thought that was kind of cool. But overall, I really liked the experience. Thank you.
So Moren East is 97% Spanish.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, well. Hi, everyone. My name is Antoine. I'm also a junior. And after, like, comparing both of the schools, we all sat down and kind of just had a talk about everything. And just, like, listening to them. What kind of, like, hit me was they were saying, like, they saw a lot of people at our school, at Downers Grove North, wearing college shirts. And like, one of them came up to me and asked, he was like, does everyone, like, expect to go to college here? And like, it just kind of, like, hit me. And I was like, like, yeah, like, that's kind of like the point of, like, what we're doing. Like, it just kind of, like, hit me because, you know, I've never been asked that before. Like, I thought that was, like, everyone's goal. And then, like, he was, like, being able to go to Downers Grove North, they feel like it's kind of like a walk to get to college. Like, we have so many resources that we use that most people, like, take advantage of to get to college. And at Moren East, they said it was kind of like a run to get there. Like, they, they need more of a, kind of like a drive, motivation kind of thing to get there. And I don't know, it just kind of hit me different. But like, overall, the experience was really well, and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Hi. So for me, it was very interesting to see the similarities between the schools. So I found, like, a lot of, my girl was named Emily, and her friends were very welcoming and really nice, like, at North. And I remember, like, sitting down in their lunchroom and, like, everyone, everyone is just really sweet and, like, welcoming. And I just, it was cool to see, they had this program. It was really interesting. It was like a technology, like, support thing. So instead of having a bunch of technicians, the students had a class period where they would fix the computers and they would distribute them out. And we didn't, I didn't have anything like that at North, and I don't do anything with technology, really. So that was really cool to experience. And just definitely, like, everyone is very welcoming, which was really nice to just be a part of.
Hi, I'm Erin Blatner. I teach math at North. I could talk a lot about similarities and differences between the two schools, but I think I want to share with you guys after listening to them. My greatest pride, source of pride for the two experiences was listening to our students and how much they changed. Listening to them on the first morning when Moren East came to us, before they came, we all were talking. And you could tell that they had a very, don't take this personally, guys, closed mindset on, like, what it was going to be like. They had their expectations. And then I got to drive the minibus for the first time on our way there. But I also got to eavesdrop on their conversations. And one of the coolest things was, and I didn't say anything to them, but on our way there, the six of them, who don't even know each other that well because they have such different experiences and different groups of friends, they are sitting there talking about all the different types of schools that there are. Like, ones in our community that, like, they didn't even know about. You know, like, they know about the Catholic schools, they know about the other public schools. But they were looking up, you guys were looking up all kinds of, they were just like, well, what else do high school students or kids our age do? So it opened up their horizon to things that they were looking at. And then on the way home, again, like, I got to hear a lot of their observations, and I appreciate that. But the other piece was, they, as we started it closer back to school, they started to ask each other about what they were doing for Easter weekend. And it was interesting because they each had something very different. And I think that they had each assumed that everybody did what they did. And it became an eye-opener of, oh, wait, these people who grow up in the exact same community as me are doing completely different things for the same weekend. It's not the same. And I think, to me, the experience that I saw them take away, and I could see it clear as day on, that was just last Thursday, wasn't it? Last Thursday, was our students realizing that even among themselves, they have so much more to learn from each other. And it just opened their eyes to, there's, there's more to the world and more to the people around them. And I think that, to me, was the biggest takeaway from the experience. So I appreciated the opportunity to be able to do this with you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Blatner talked about it a little bit, but that growth that we all experienced, like, together as a group of kids who didn't know each other at the start of this, and then meeting those new students and those new students becoming our friends, it was just an amazing experience. We definitely all experienced that growth. And just thank you so much for letting us come to speak. And if anybody had any questions, I'd love to answer them or do my best.
First of all, I'd like to just commend you. What a great idea this was.
Thank you.
To do it.
Thank you.
Just reaching out to Mr. Raul. I just, when somebody made a comment, like, it's like watching High School Musical, and I'm assuming nobody was breaking in the song. I mean, how did that make you feel? How did you respond? What did you, or, you know, like, you're all running towards college? And, or you're all, you're all wearing collared shirts and going towards college. And for us, that's a run. How did you respond? How did you, what kind of questions did you ask back?
Well, I think, especially when one student said that, you know, college is more like a run for them, I think a lot of us were just shocked, like, the realization just kind of hit us that college is our expectation. Like, that is what we are all working towards. And that's just kind of a given. Like, we have so many programs to help students get into the college of their choosing, get better test scores, you know, teach, like, help them work, you know, and find what they want to do with their lives. But at the same time, like, at Moren East, it's just different. And I don't think any of us realized that. Like, they have a lot of amazing things that help the students focus on trades. You know, they have the IT department that somebody was talking about, where students are physically working on computers, building them, fixing them, not just carrying Chromebooks to students in other classes. They have a restaurant setting where students can work and teachers can go there during their lunch periods and get served by students. If a student wants to go into, you know, the restaurant management business, that kind of thing. They have a little auto body shop so students can physically work on cars. You know, that's a class they can take there. Just like, they focus on both of them. You know, students have that option because college might be harder for them to achieve, or might not be something that they even really want to do. But it's just, it was just so amazing, you know. We were all shocked by it, but at the same time, it wasn't like, we weren't kind of upset by that. We weren't like, oh, why don't any of you want to go to college? It was more like, wow, that's really interesting. Just something that we never thought of. But an amazing consideration to kind of have. And it was just super eye-opening, I think, for everybody.
Thank you.
It occurs to me what an amazing world this would be if everybody would follow that model that you've put together here, this experience you've had, if everybody could have these kinds of experiences. Because even as adults, sometimes we get wrapped up in our own, our own worlds. And so, congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes. Student board member question. He said Kirk and Elliot are next. I heard, never mind.
We've established it's been a long day already.
It's been a long day. There was a, there was, I think she said something about Ali and never mind. A puppet show when I was a kid. Wants to go, well, this was North, so.
We'll throw it back to South.
We'll throw it back to South.
All right. Well, I have a few things that I'd like to talk about. Well, the first thing that, I'm just going to start farthest away and coming up there. So we had the German exchange concert, which happened with both North and South. But I didn't host a family, but I still got the experience to go to the concert. And it was, you know, it was a good experience to see what they think of, you know, the United States. It reminds me of earlier this year when we had the Japanese band come. They find our school very interesting. The Japanese band particularly, like, the vending machines. They took pictures of vending machines. They're like, wow, you get these in your school? That's so incredible. But, you know, it's interesting to see them, you know, get to go in shadows, see what our lunches are like and see that stuff. So I think it's, it's a good experience, and it's 35 years well-spent for the district. And I think that was really good for us. Going into last week was Earth Week, so I attended a few events that, particularly for that. On Tuesday, I was at White and Company, and we talked about sustainable building practices. And we got a tour of their building. And we learned about not only their sustainability code and how that they want to apply that to our school, but how they apply that to all their building practices and, and all the things. So I thought that was really good. And then I capped it off with, I had the privilege of running the Energy Slam at, in the South High Auditorium, which is our annual climate change assembly, where we have select social studies classes, and pretty much every science class comes to the auditorium. And we give a presentation about not only what climate change is and why climate change exists in our society and around the world, but what we can do to fix it. And this was, the topic this year was legislation. So we had three different teams that talked about three different climate legislations. We had carbon tax and dividend, cap and trade, and then stimulus package and federal mandates was the last team. And it was really interesting to not only be able to present to the student body, but able to talk about, receive their questions and, you know, explain to them a little bit more about how climate science works and about how the different policies could be implemented. And I think that, I think that that's a really, a really good thing. So, you know, it's good to see people interested in making a change and wanting to go and transition our world and our economy to a clean energy economy, which I think is really good. And then the only last thing is that next weekend is the musical at South. And it would be great if all of you wanted to come see our musical, How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying. I know I have a lot of friends and stuff that are participating in that, so that'd be good. But thank you.
Go Chipmunks.
So lots, lots of stuff going on at North, too. A few weeks ago, I think it was the beginning of April, our PRISM club, our LGBTQ club, planned and facilitated a week of awareness for all North students and staff to participate in. Some of the activities were a student-led panel and discussion in the library, which I was not able to attend because I was aiding for the Science Department. But I heard really good things about that. And I think they do it most, they've been doing it for at least four or five years now. And then on Friday, they did a day of silence where students were able to take a vow of silence for the day in order to bring awareness to a community that is often not given a voice in our world. And I just thought it was cool that the week was student-planned and student-led. And I think it's just an important thing that we're becoming aware of. And then we also recently had the NHS induction, which was last week, I believe. And I was not able to attend that either this year. But it's just a nice thing because when you're getting inducted into the National Honors Society, if you're able to, it's like the accumulation of a lot of service hours and a lot of tutoring hours. And it's just nice to see that accumulation and that work pay off and some recognition. The next thing I wanted to talk about, kind of going on with the sustainability, the APES classes at North and I think some other science classes, like research topics for earth science and stuff, were participating in a STEM challenge where they partnered with ComEd recently. And so the top groups from DGN got to go present their ideas. And so pretty much in their classes and small groups, they were coming up with ideas that were STEM-based. And then the top groups from North got to go to ComEd and present those ideas. And then that was with a bunch of schools in the area. And then, or maybe it was just North, I forget. But then the top school, or group from there got to go to Google and present their idea. And the group that went to Google, actually, their idea had to do with sustainability. And it had to do with scooters that could be recharged with, using solar energy, as opposed to being plugged in with another source of energy that's less sustainable. And so that was really cool that they were able to go out into the real world with an idea they came up with at North and present it to people at Google and stuff like that.
For those scooters, like, for, like, disabled people? Or scooters, like?
No, scooters, like, the idea was, sorry, I forgot to mention this, at college campuses. So a lot of cities, like, I know San Francisco has them, some cities on the East Coast, too, have scooters now, similar to, like, the divvy bikes you can rent in Chicago. But they're like scooters.
Scooter, scooter.
But they're like electric scooters. And so their idea was based around recharging them with solar energy. So it was really cool. And then lastly, just wanted to talk about the upcoming things for seniors that are, as the year ends. We have our grad night, which is at Six Flags next, not this coming weekend, but the next weekend. And then prom tickets just went on sale this past weekend. So students were at North nice and early to get in line for those. And honors convocation and graduation to wrap up the month. So lots of stuff happening and exciting at North.
And the kids at South.
I forgot to add, we did have prom last weekend.
Oh, my God.
And it was, it was snowing for prom, which actually, considering how hot it was inside, sometimes it was nice to walk out on the cold balcony and get, and step out in the cold for a while. But it went well. And it was, it was a good experience for everyone. I thought prom went really well.
And did you bring pictures?
I have them all on my phone. So during the little intermission, I can show you, I can show you lots of prom pictures, yes.
Everybody was freezing getting into the prom.
It was interesting. Photos were interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all planned to go outside and take nice, nice nature pics in 70-degree weather. And then it turned out, no, we're going inside because it's, you know, sleeting, so.
You know what? We had probably 50 or 60 kids come to the library to get pictures taken.
Oh, yeah, I heard about that.
At the Downers Library. So that was pretty cool. I mean, we were all like, wow.
Do we have any other questions for student perspectives? Okay, we're going to move on to the reception of visitors. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Does anybody wish to address the board? Okay, comments will be limited to three minutes to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. If you need more time, please submit your thoughts in writing to the Board Secretary, Mrs. Nydak. And we need you to address your full name. The proceedings are being taped recorded for the purpose of reducing accurate meeting minutes. And observationally, this protocol is appreciated.
All right, we'll make it short and sweet. I'm Valerie Hardy, President of the Downers Grove Education Association.
Maria Giorgio. I am the Vice President at North for the Support Staff Association.
And we just wanted to take a minute to publicly thank, especially Don, for your service to the board, to our community. I know the DGEA was very, very excited when we first met you, as you were running for your first election. And we're thrilled to have you as part of the team, have considered you to be level-headed, thoughtful, a great supporter of our students and our teachers. And we are just so publicly grateful for the service that you've provided and wish you all the best. And hopefully, a little bit of time for your family now.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the support staff, I also want to thank you for your support. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you so much. It's very kind of you.
And I'm not sure that I will still be here. I have a carpool. I have to drive later on. So also, a public thank you to all of the board members who are continuing their terms, returning for another term, or joining for a first term. Thank you for your service. We know it is a great commitment, a great commitment, and oftentimes, a great sacrifice. And your work does not go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, you've kind of stolen our thunder, so.
Sorry.
We appreciate it.
Well, they said.
Well, they said. Well, they said. Because they were pretty articulate. Before we adjourn, scene die, we will adjourn, and then we will regroup. We did want to take, we would be remiss if we did not take a moment to recognize our outgoing board member, Don Renner. So with every election, there is change to the board. And while we are very happy to have Joanna join us, we are very sad to see Don leave. Don, you are a mensch in every form of the term. Do you know what that word means?
No, I don't.
We need to get you out more often.
He'll have time now.
Mensch is a Hittish word. It means a person of integrity and of honor. It is the best form of humanity. It is what every person should aspire to be. I'm like.
For clump?
I for, I for clump. But it is. It is, it is.
Trying to make me cry here, Nancy?
It is what everybody should aspire to be. You've been, I had to write it down because I knew I would be bursting into tears. You have been thoughtful and tireless in your service to District 99. And you have often been the voice of reason in closed session that nobody else gets to know about but us. We're going to miss you. We're going to miss your mind, your kindness, your reason, your baking, and your wit. We are not going to let you go too far. As you, thank God, he has consented to serve as a community advisor on the master facility plan. And we have every intention in getting, of getting you back again in two years. Mike and I have already formed a reelection committee. But until that time, we want you to enjoy your Monday nights. We want you to stay warm, which you're going to understand in a moment. Stay involved and really understand and know that we so appreciate all that you have done for our students, our teachers, our administrators, and our community. Renner 2021 has a nice one.
You're here. Thanks, Nancy. I third that.
Thank you, Don, for everything.
Thank you. There's more.
Waterfall.
Before you get a thank you. I told my, my family this is going to be five minutes, so. It will be. It'll be five minutes after we're done. Okay. Before you get a thank you from the District 99 administration, one of the organizations that Don has served on over the last few years is Lend and has served in a leadership role from there. Lend passed along this proclamation that was read at the last Lend meeting. So I'm going to read it on their behalf. Whereas the Lend Council is governed by the Lend Executive Committee, and whereas the Lend Executive Committee is comprised of bright, articulate, and giving individuals, and whereas member Donald Renner will be leaving the board after serving during a time of growth, development, enhanced involvement, and whereas on this 26th day of April in the year of 2019, we honor your service, commitment, and dedication to Lend, and more importantly, to the districts and to their students and communities. Therefore, be it resolved that you are appreciated, you are thanked, and you will be missed as you leave Lend and celebrate in your future endeavors. And then let it further be resolved that in your honor, a donation has been made to the International Rescue Committee, providing a year of school for a young girl. Very nice.
Wonderful.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Wow. I can tell you, the Lend organization was as sad to hear that you were going as the District 99 administration was. Our, our team here has greatly appreciated your thoughtfulness, how you approach meetings in a very professional manner, that you're always prepared, and you're always willing to give. The amount of time that you've given around the master facility plan over the last three years has been immense, and your time has been essential in moving this project forward. And the, the citizens and students of District 99 will be impacted by your ideas, thoughtfulness, and commitment for the next 100 years, so. Might be a little overstating. I don't know. These buildings stand to stand a long time around here. So a job well done, and we're going to just keep that name plaque tonight instead of giving it back to you because we expect we'll be sliding it back into one of these standards.
Renner 2021.
Second day. Third day. This is for me.
Yeah.
So whenever we have a board member outgoing, the district presents a little token of appreciation, so. Thanks again. Appreciate that very much, Hank. Thank you.
And this is just to keep you warm because you always eye them when you're there.
Should I open this? Yes, you should open both. Oh, okay. Okay. I'm not good at opening gifts. Just ask my wife.
It's actually kind of a joke.
Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you. There you go. Thank you, Nancy. See, now you got a uniform. Actually, don't have much apparel for D99.
I know you don't, because every time anybody wears any, you go, let's get handed out.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Stay warm.
That just flips open. Okay. Julie did an excellent job. You can tell that wasn't me. It was, you were speaking with a third grader. Oh, that's nice. It's a nice plaque. Thank you. I'll put that in my office.
That's very nice.
And treasurer, thank you. I didn't prepare anything to say. I just, there's two words that come to mind. You know, I feel blessed for the last four years to work with all of you, getting to know each of you and make personal relationships with, you know, Terry, I knew before joining the board, but I didn't know, I knew Nancy somewhat. But getting to know all of you over the last four years has been fantastic. Working with Mark, and Pete, and Hank, Scott, Gina, all of the administrative staff, it just, it feels, I feel like my kids are going to be in really great hands when they get here. And so from that perspective, I feel blessed. And then secondly, I feel really proud. I think over the last four years, you know, we, we brought Hank to the district, which is the best darn decision I've been involved with since I got married to my wife, probably. We're going to overstate things. No, in all seriousness, I mean, Hank. I don't know if I should be honored or your wife should be excited. I think I had some kids born in between there. Maybe I should have prepared remarks. Anyways, no, Hank, Hank is going to be a fantastic leader for this district for maybe another 100 years. I don't know. But, you know, that was, that was, that was a really tough decision, but one that was made with much thought, and I couldn't be happier with the, the outcome of that decision. We hired Janice, and Janice has been just a fantastic leader for North. The turbulent times that that school has experienced over the last several years without her stewardship at North High School, I don't, I don't know if the, the students would have, would have been in as good a shape as they, as they made it through over those, over those four, four years. And then lastly, the master facility plan, we saw through the referendum question, we, we, I take great pride in the amount of transparency that we undertook with the community. We passed the referendum, and now I'm super excited to see what's going to happen over the next three years. And as Nancy mentioned, Hank invited me graciously to stay on the committee as a community member, and I was very thankful for having that opportunity. It's a project that's near and dear to my heart. There's two of my three sitting over there who are going to enjoy the benefits of that construction project, so, you know, I think I'm just very proud in that regard, so. Thank you very much.
Have some cake.
We have a motion.
We need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Renner, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I will make that motion. Second.
Make seconds. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You are adjourning, and we will return in about 10 minutes.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. And I think people will be okay. The first thing that we do is we're going to be giving the.
We have a roll call.
Roll call, roll call.
We have a roll call. And first, the oath, actually. Oath first.
It says, oath of office. You're right, first. I'm sorry. You want me to do roll call first?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. We threw you off already.
Yeah, sorry.
Madam President, sorry.
All right. Anyway, our oath of office, if the, if the new members would please stand, and we will give you the oath, or do you want it all go together?
Family members can come up?
Yeah.
Yeah, family members can come up?
Yeah, come stand right up here in front and center.
Yeah, come on.
Mary?
Yeah, right.
Mike?
Yes, come on up. Oh, in the, in the center. Yeah.
You don't.
I know.
You do that.
I know.
Nancy shore y'all up with the baby. All right.
Oh!
Are we, are we ready?
Next, thanks, Mike.
Okay. All right. And I think, I think, I think the board members have their, their thing in front of them, but I will read it with you. And any of the other board members would like to follow along with us, they are welcome to.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I think I'm actually sorry, everybody.
Oh, it's all right. It's all right. We're here for the kids. Yeah.
All right. Yes, this is, this is what we're here for anyway, is for the kids. So I, Terry, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Member of the Board of Education for Community High School District 99 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the law of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect the taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that the board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board while remaining right to see changes through ethical and structural channels. And as part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable role of the education of every student in the district. I shall foster with the board sense of participation of the community, form our goals, define outcomes, and set the course for the Community High School District 99. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain and maximize potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure the continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with the state law. I shall serve as educational key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools and institutions, High School District 99. And I shall strive, together with the district's superintendent, to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
That's new this year, the new extended version.
Yeah. Like an electric slide, everything is.
That being said, picture.
Yes.
From memory.
The president's first job was.
You guys must have lost a more important job.
It's usually taken more seriously.
Wow. You'd imagine you say that.
That 62nd birthday happened, it just all fell down.
Madam Secretary, can you do the roll call, please?
I would be delighted. Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Nancy Cupka.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Rick Pavanado.
Here.
Joanna Boskos-Drexler.
Here.
Eleanor Flynn.
Here.
And Kirk Kaufman. Here. Well, we have a majority, and we are ready. Our first order of business is to elect officers, and that first office would be president. And, all right, I'm going to take it. I'm going to nominate Nancy Cupka as president.
I'll second the nomination.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other nominations?
No.
If not, I will call the, the vote. All in favor of Nancy Cupka for president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Our new president is Nancy Cupka. And I will be happy to hand this gavel over to.
Thank you all. Thank you all for the vote of confidence, or the vote of relief.
Combination of the two.
Okay. Next item is the nomination for vice president. Do we hear any nominations?
I would. I would like to nominate Mike Davenport. I've been on the board now six years, and I think Mike is a reason, a voice of reason sometimes, and I think his input is valued. And I'm happy to serve with him. I think he'd be a good second-in-command for the face of this board. So I'd like to nominate Mike.
Thank you. Unexpected.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I guess not.
I was going to, I was going to nominate Terry to, again, but.
It's okay.
Are you sure?
I'm fine.
I, you sure?
It's fine.
Okay.
Any other? All of us in favor of Mike? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Mike. Do you need a nomination for the position of secretary?
I nominate Julie Nydak.
Who?
Julie Nydak.
Cheryl, seconds.
Humbly beg that Julie doesn't. That's a, humbly.
Please. I would be honored. Thank you.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Julie. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This is the first reception of visitors. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the board about any issue being voted on tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of meeting dates and places. There is a calendar in your board packet. And just to be clear, all meetings were, are scheduled to be here at the ASC, correct?
Yes, beginning at 6:30. Regardless of business meeting or workshop meeting, we tried to stick to the first and third where we could, but due to holidays and other events, there's a couple of slight variations in there, but they're all, all listed for you.
And it's always subject to change.
And always subject to change, but this is the one that gets posted.
There's a quick question about it, and we may have had a discussion about this before. Is it customary that we go on Mondays?
Yes. My first year, I proposed moving it to Thursday. It was firmly trumped in that.
That's why we ran. People would run because they knew it's on Monday.
All right.
Okay.
Would you like to have a suggestion?
I'm just asking. Is that just the rule?
It's, it's not the rule, but it's the tradition here.
Why can't I open this?
We could revisit it if you'd like. If anybody else would like.
I, I, I mean, I don't, I, I don't have rationale. Why is it Monday? Just questioning, asking. Why is it?
Because it has been.
Because it always has been. And to Mark, to Rick's point, we looked at changing it, and.
We did.
Everybody else has kind of like arranged their schedule so far.
Yeah, because when we ran, we knew this was the day we'd have to commit for public office.
Okay.
Like the village is Tuesday, this was Monday.
My only question is, is the 6:30 part. It is so hard for me to get here at 6:30.
And that was a change for us, so.
I know, I know it's more for you guys than, than that, but I just.
We serve at the pleasure of the board, Terry.
I, I'd like to.
By the time I get off at 5 o'clock, it, it.
These guys have to hang around all night.
I, I understand that. I understand that.
And so we can get here a little bit early, at least get them home to their families a little bit earlier in the evening.
You know, I'm just thinking that it's, it's just hard for me to get here at 6:30 with my responsibilities that I have.
Well, we certainly could, could poll the members and see if there's a better time to start. You know, we've made some other changes, too. Now we have closed session afterwards, wherever possible, so that staff can go home.
Right. Yeah, I, I think that's, that's, that's great.
Which I think has helped.
I think so, too.
And, and I think people have made, I think staff's made a really concerted effort to try to get as little unclosed as possible. And that has helped a lot, too, because we used to have sessions till midnight sometimes. I don't think we've had one of those in years.
No. They haven't gone late.
No. So, you know, if, if, if 6:30 is an issue, we can certainly look at pushing it back. But we made it earlier so that people could get out of here at an earlier time, too.
And I, I try my best, but sometimes I get here right at 6:30, and it's pushing it. I don't know.
I do, too. I'm, I'm normally one of the last two people to get here.
Okay, I'm going to suggest this. Can we maybe take a poll offline?
Yeah.
If there's a better time, 6:30, 7:00, 7:30. Look at their calendars and think about.
Yeah, administratively, it makes no difference.
I, I also understand, you know, for you guys, you know, but.
6:30 good for you?
6:30 is fine for me. If they wanted to move it later, I'm okay with that, too. I don't have that same issue that you have. But I think it's more to the people who are staff of the school, do they have, is that really a hardship for them?
Right.
I'm flexible, too.
I look at it as, it's a push to get here at 6:30, but then I'm home by 8:30, 9 o'clock, as opposed to 9:30, 10.
Yeah, so far, it's worked out, right?
Yeah, I think it's.
It was a good year.
There was a little fear early on that it could, you know, it could still go as long, you know, but that hasn't happened.
No.
Well, what I do like is having the meeting start at the same time, because I had a little bit of a challenge initially, like, when do we start at this time? When do we start at that time?
For me, the biggest piece was, is doing the closed session after. I really, I really like that move, because I think it's, it's, it's better for the public. Somebody wants to come to a meeting, they, they know for certain, we're starting at 6:30.
Right. On the dot.
You know, yeah. And they don't have to hang around for 45 minutes because we went late in closed session or something like that.
Right. I think that's, I agree. I think that's important.
For me, that was the key component of the change. So I'm, I'm good with 6:32, but if, 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 if we need to make a change, I'm, I'm understanding of that, too, so.
It'd be good to find out how many. It would be easier to make it later.
So do we just want to do a show of hands right now, or do we want to do this offline? Let's just do a quick show of hands. How many people would really like to consider, how many people would like us to consider changing the 6:30 timeframe? How many board members? Terry?
Just me, I guess.
I'm flexible either way, and I think that's what Joanna has said, too.
I'm very flexible. I mean, I'm just thinking 7:00 is just easier, because, you know, when I have to leave work at 5:00, and I can't leave before 5:00.
About 6:45.
You know, I have to get home, I make dinner, and then try to get my dishes done. I know that sounds silly, but.
No, everybody has their responsibilities.
You know.
Well, I eat Jimmy John's tonight, so.
Split the difference.
Well, that's nice, but.
So I had Jimmy John's sandwich by myself at the kitchen table, so.
Well, I don't always get that luxury.
Split the difference and go 6:45. Give it a little more time.
Want to do that?
That's an unusual, that's an unusual start time, though.
You won't forget it.
Yeah? Now, that's a good. Doesn't blend in with everything else.
How will that work for you guys? It's a school night.
I mean, it's fine.
Yeah, I think either one is pretty much.
Normally, we get done with enough time for me to get homework done afterwards or something like that.
You're not getting enough homework.
That's exactly what he said.
You've got 12 days, you're almost done.
You're hearing it exactly right.
It was the most stressful three weeks.
I shadowed them both for a day of school. They get plenty of homework.
Believe me, I have a senior at home, and I know they're very busy.
Cal PC, what a great class.
Yeah. I think before 6:30 would be hard for students, because, anytime before that, because of sports and stuff.
Right.
6:30 or later.
6:30 or after.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, Terry, I'm sorry, but it seems like 6:30 is going to stay.
That's fine, you know.
Okay.
My dishes will not be done. And that's okay.
And that's okay. May I mention to Reverend Nadia Bolzweber?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, appointment.
We need a motion.
We need a motion to approve the meeting dates and places.
So moved.
Thank you.
Don and?
Second.
Mike.
Thank you. Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, the appointment of board committees and liaisons. You'll see there's a list of the board committee and liaisons. Please let me know within, by the end of the week, what committee you would like to serve on, if you want to stay with the committee you're on. We'll try to accommodate everybody's desires and wishes. We've been pretty successful in the past in doing so. And then we'll make final assignments. Board workshop, the Consolidated District Plan. Gina?
This is Gina.
Okay. So the Illinois State Board of Education is now requiring that districts complete a Consolidated District Plan. The Consolidated District Plan is one plan that will encompass pretty much all of our general education grants, as well as EL and special education grants. So it's one plan that covers Title I, which relates to low-income and academically at-risk students; Title II, which is PD; Title III grants, which relate to EL, English language learners; Title IV, which I've brought into the board before when we talked about the CELEB by literacy, and how we're funding Apple testing; and then IDEA, which relates to special education. The board may recall, in the past, bringing a Title I plan to the board. We no longer will do a Title I plan, and this Consolidated District Plan is designed to kind of streamline some of the grants. So eventually, some of the questions that we have to answer within the actual grant applications should go away over time, because this Consolidated Plan, which is immense, it's certainly going to be one of the longer plans that I've ever experienced, should streamline each of those grants down the road. So it brings together those multiple funding sources, and the idea is to provide holistic services to students. So in order to write the plan, we have several things that we need to do. We need to do a needs assessment, which I am beginning right now, which includes a comprehensive analysis of data. We'll be looking at a lot of the data sets the board has looked at before with us related, for example, to ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. So we'll be looking at things like freshman on track and graduation rates and those kinds of things. We need to get input from various stakeholders, which we've actually already started to do. There are specific questions that we need to address. Some of the questions are the same as the questions from the Title I plan, which the board approved a year ago and then the year before that. Some of the questions relate to student achievement, asking what kind of programs we have for all learners, special education students, for example, ELL students, low-income students, talking about the measures that we take to identify students. So there's very specific questions that we have to address. And then obviously, once the plan is written, I will bring it back to the board, because local school board approval is required, and then it goes to the Illinois State Board of Education for approval as well. So as I said, some of the things that we will look at in terms of data sets, we'll look at graduation rate and ninth grade on track, as well as SAT scores, both English Language Arts, or ELA as we refer to it, and math. And then we'll also look at some of our attendance data, specifically chronic absenteeism. The plan is also, we're also required through the plan to do a needs analysis and comprehensive data review of discipline data. So we'll be looking at some things like our in-school and out-of-school suspension rates. And in looking at that data, we're going to break it down, so not just looking at all students, but breaking it down by various subgroups of students as well. So as I said, we've already started. Hank was kind enough to give me some time at his superintendent's advisory committee meeting. I did a brief presentation and had the committee kind of look at some data. We did look at the all data, but we looked at graduation rate, we looked at ninth grade on track and SAT, and got some really interesting and valuable feedback from that committee. This, or starting in May, we are working on the needs assessment and data review. In fact, I will be working with ad team at South later in the week, following the week with leadership team and executive council, and then here on teacher advisory later in the month. I've also formed consolidated district plan committees in each building, and those committees involve teachers as well as support staff. So May and June, gathering all this information, addressing those questions, writing the plan, reviewing the plan with various stakeholders, and then bringing it back to the board in May to give you an update as to where we are. By June 17, the plan will be completed. Again, I will bring it back to the board for your review and ask, obviously, for you to approve the plan. So this is kind of an overview tonight of the Consolidated District Plan, what we need to do and the steps we're taking to get to our June 17 date. Any questions regarding the plan?
I just got to tell you, my heart stopped when I opened my board packet, because I read it as consolidating the districts.
Yeah.
Oh.
What?
I'm like, what is this?
And we didn't name it, so.
Yeah, we didn't name it, yeah.
Most of the, most of the information, we already, would you say we already have, or?
Yeah. A lot of the information we already have, in part because we did the Title I plan the last two years. So some of the questions are identical, not all, but some of them. We're pretty good, and I believe in District 99 about doing data review, so I've already done some of that and brought that to the board several times before. So I think we're in good shape. It is pretty comprehensive, though, having written several district improvement plans, school improvement plans, Title I plans, probably some other plans, I can't recall right now.
Unfortunately, right now, it's kind of Frankenstein. It's like they just took them and stuck them all together, where over time, they should start to overlap and be more efficient.
It'll be more efficient, and it really should, ideally, if it works the way it's intended to, help us to make sure that we're supporting all students, as opposed to we're doing this for Yale students and this for special education students and this for this group and.
So is there, is there a reporting that's going away that this is taking the place of?
The Title I plan is going to go away, so that will go away. And then ideally, and we haven't seen this yet, but ideally, some of the questions that are within the actual grant proposals that we write every year should go away or change or be minimized. So ultimately, this should be better. Until I see what that looks like, I can't say for sure.
Just thinking in terms of, is this something that is putting even a greater burden on you all, or this is being mitigated by the fact that there's other things you don't have to?
I think ultimately, it'll be mitigated.
The first year, it's a little more work, because you've got to figure out the new system and everything else, but hopefully down the road, it means less work for us.
Yeah, I'm.
By us, I mean mostly, Gina.
Okay. Professional learning update, real?
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Now that the sugar from the cake has worn off, and we're sitting here, I'm here to present to you about professional learning. My goal is to have a presentation that's shorter than the oath of office, so we'll see how we can do on that.
What's that? What are you trying to say?
Boy, that wouldn't take much. That went on forever.
So before I get into our professional learning program, I just want to frame it around our district goals, and just to remind us that Domain Two is about the development and evaluation of our staff. So what I'm about to talk to you about is related to Domain Two. There's three main projects that we've been working on within this Domain Two. The first one, a lot of the design work was done last year with our certified appraisal system. We did some redesign there. We have been designing for almost two academic years now, this personalized professional learning program, which I'll get to in a little bit. And then we've also been working on our equity and inclusion programming. I'm scheduled to come back in July to go deeper into the equity and inclusion with you. Before I get into talking about what's new and what we're doing, I wanted to take some time to recognize that we have a history here in our district of offering a really robust and high-quality professional learning experience for our staff. So I listed up there all of the things that we have always had in District 99. And then one thing that we added this year is we captured some of our late-start Mondays, which were traditionally used for PLCs, and we decided to use those for all staff focused on learning around equity. A note with this is that this was a bit of a transformation for our professional learning program, because historically, that learning has been for our certified staff. With these, we included all adults. So any adult that's in our building that has the opportunity to interact with a student is in those learning groups. So our support staff overall, I've heard, is very appreciative of the fact that we're including them in this professional learning with everybody else. Whoop, that jumped really fast.
We're done.
Presentation's done. There you go.
Wow, that is faster than the oath of office.
Where are we at? There you go. Everything that we're doing is around this idea of collective efficacy, and what that means is that we want our staff to feel that they are capable of being a part of promoting successful student outcomes, but the collective efficacy is really also that we feel that our peers are also capable of that. And so the way for us to feel that all of us are capable of it is for us to learn together. So that's what this personalized professional learning program is about. I just have a slide here just to remind us that everything we've done with this is based on research. We've pulled from many different sources, packaged them together. A committee met last year, helped us to unpack some of this and figure out which pieces would work for us. We want our staff to have voice and choice in their learning, so we have prepared workshops that staff can select into, but this personalized professional learning is really for them as professionals to recognize what it is that they think that their students need them to do better at, and so they select in and choose their topic and their partners and who they're going to learn with. So one thing that we asked last year was, what do you need? What do you need us to do to be able to create a program where you can have voice and choice in your professional learning? And overwhelmingly, the response that came back is that educators are overwhelmed with paperwork and stress related to appraisal. So that's why we spent last year redesigning the appraisal process for our certified staff to free up some time, some paperwork, and also a little bit of mental time, so that way they can focus on learning instead of trying to score a particular score on their appraisal. So this is very briefly what the personalized professional learning program looks like. Our staff gets an opportunity to choose what the topic is that they're curious about, that they want to get even better at. We have some prepared models available to them, so things like inquiry groups, classroom walkthroughs, shadowing. Hank piloted our shadowing protocol this year, when he shadowed our students, so he helped us work out some kinks in that. And then the other part, too, is staff gets to choose who their partners are that they're going to be doing their learning with. So as I said before, this collective efficacy idea is for us to all recognize that we're capable of contributing. We all have to learn together. So they choose their partners. And then the last piece down there at the bottom is the reflective partner. What we learned from the research is that reflection is the most important piece, and so we're really leveraging our instructional coaches, our librarians, the people that traditionally have served in reflective roles through our district, we're partnering with them and having them help us figure out this last reflective piece. From our committee came a model that we've adopted here in District 99 around professional learning, our framework, just communicating that professional learning should include all of these pieces, planning what it is that you want to learn, doing your learning, reflecting, acting, once you've learned something, incorporating that in your classes, and then sharing, sharing out what you've learned across the district and across the region, too. There it goes again.
Wow.
Here's a few milestones. One thing that we did last year is we redesigned the position that was known as the Instructional Technology Coordinator into the Instructional Coordinator. So that role was in title focused on the instructional technology. In practice, the people in those roles actually were having a larger scope, so we retitled it, we changed the way that they work a little bit. So now the goal is that they are going to be the liaison between our staff to build connections between staff who have similar curiosities. We've piloted the models for personalized professional learning this year. We're in the process of explaining it to all of our faculty, and then when they return in August is when they will sign up, and then we'll find the partnerships for people who don't have a set group of people they want to work with. And then instructional coaching, also, we've been working with them over this past year, including them in this program, so that way they're positioned to better support the program when it launches. Really quick, like I said, I'm going to be back in July to talk about equity and inclusion. We do have a framework that came from our work with Gary Howard and the Deep Equity Institute, talking about different ways in which we approach this work. On the right-hand side, though, are four different opportunities that our staff, actually, three opportunities for our staff, and then one opportunity at the bottom that we're starting to design how our students can access this programming. So we have CED, which is a program of professional learning around diversity and equity in education, and that meets monthly. We have, this year, we did our Deep Equity Workshop, a four-day workshop that had our administrators and our department chairs in that workshop, and it's a workshop facilitated by our staff. We repurposed some of our equity and inclusion late starts. Next year, we're going to have even more of them, because the staff has said that they find it valuable and they want more. And we're in the process of designing what a student program might look like. So we've included some of our students on the equity teams this year, and we're investigating some programs that we might want to try next year to see if they fit our needs. We've been going around, joining all of these different groups in the area, attending conferences, because every time we go to something like that, we find some gems, and we bring those back to the district. So we've been very active in building networks around the region, going to some conferences, national conferences also. And then the last thing, just to remind the board, last December, Georgia Hash, Sarah Correntine, and I went to the Learning Forward National Conference and shared our story about where we are in this journey. We're going to go back, I'm going to go back with Lisa Litchman, Isabel Menke, and Hank, and we're going to go to the same conference, but this time this year, and we're going to talk about now, how far we've come. And then Hank and I also are going to be presenting at the Joint Annual Conference in November to talk about similar work related to this. That's my presentation.
Congratulations on being picked up for that conference, by the way.
It was longer than the oath.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I know, Ed's keeping time over there.
He's got some professional learning goals.
It's only because of the technology, just saying.
So just a question, I mean, this is great work, really love hearing this, but a lot of this seems to be, at least to me, and maybe it's just me, I'm trying to get a grasp on what this actually means for a teacher.
Yeah.
This probably comes down to what individualized, self-directed learning plan. So when you come back in June, can you kind of give us a sample, like Teacher A, this is what it would look like for a person? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get it from a philosophical view down to a little bit more tactile, just so I understand it from a teacher perspective, what do they see and how does it look to them when it gets implemented?
Yeah, so I can respond a little bit to that right now. We did sort of a version of this, not this school year, but the prior school year, before we had our late starts centered around equity and inclusion, we called it inquiry groups. So it was the same idea that as a professional, you can choose what it is you're interested in. So for example, I was in a group that's very curious around blended learning. What is blended learning? How are other districts doing this thing? So we had our meetings where we would get together, start to do a little bit of reading, research, then we would break, and it would be a few weeks, we'd be doing our own research, maybe trying some things in our classes. We'd get back together, talk about what we've learned, some successes, some not successes yet, and you go through this cycle of you learn something, you try something, you come back and you share it, that generates new ideas. Because one thing that we do know is that a teacher's day is very hectic, and for the most part, a teacher's day is isolated from other adults. So they spend a lot of time with our students, but they don't get much opportunity with other adults to do their learning. So this is a program we're trying to design to create that time and space for them to learn with other adults. We have a few other things that we're doing. We have this thing called Innovation Lab, where we are subbing out some of our more innovative teachers, and it's the same thing, we're getting them into a room to talk about what they're working on. Because the other thing about isolation is that when somebody is doing something really cool, we don't have a mechanism on how to spread that back out to the staff for them to try, to learn from that and them to try it. So we have our most innovative teachers that are in that group, they're with our instructional coordinators, they're learning those things, and then our instructional coordinators, as they interact with other staff, are then saying, hey, you should talk to this person because this person is doing something similar to that.
The goal is to allow the professional to identify, it might be a gap that they have or an area that they're growing in, or it could be an area that they excel in and they want to even push further, but they know their practice best, right? And then to set up kind of some support groups or people that are like-minded that are researching the same thing, but then the real key pivot point in this is that reflective partner, so that as they're growing, as they're learning, as they're changing, they're partnered up with somebody that's really trained in kind of the questioning reflective practices to help them, really, they know a lot of the answers to this, or they're learning a lot of the answers to what they're trying to, and this person helps draw that out of them through that process. And then you just keep growing and building on what you're doing.
But the focus of equity?
Is, everybody has a strand of that going, yeah?
That's unconscious bias.
That, one of the things we talk about is implicit bias.
Implicit bias, that's right.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
I would love to, you know, when you have one of those late starts, all-staff type of things on a Monday, I'd love to be a fly on the wall and come and observe and see some of it in action.
Yeah, we can talk about how that might look. We'd have to find a group that would be comfortable with it, because it is small group dynamics.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, but we could definitely talk through where that might fit in, or one of the equity workshops, or, you know, at some point we can come in and see some of the.
Those late starts are a little challenging because.
Institute day.
Or an institute day.
Or an institute day, yeah.
Yeah, we can find an opportunity.
Yeah.
Or even to, maybe some groups might be willing to have something recorded.
That's possible, too.
You have some, thinking of like our opening doors for the board. The point about a teacher, I mean, I knew this, a teacher, a normal day being just with students, not with an adult, I mean, I knew that, that's obvious, but I don't know that I've ever really reflected on what that, what the effect of that is. So this is really valuable from that.
There's a lot of aspects of the teaching profession that this seeks to kind of close some gaps with. For example, education, teaching is one of the few, I stole this from somebody else, this isn't my idea, but I've heard this multiple times and it really rings true for me, that teaching is one of the few professions that's a performance art, right? It really is a performance art. In all of the other performance arts, you spend 90 to 99% of your time practicing, and you spend 1% to 5% of your time performing. And teaching is one of the few performance arts that's flipped backwards. You spend nearly all of your time performing, and you have very little time for practice. And this structure helps to kind of break that and pull it closer, it's not going to pull it closer to what we see in other spots, but at least get more time dedicated to that practice and behind the scenes, and not all performance, so that that's there.
Not all, not all districts and not all communities understand the value of having those kind of late start things that we do, and that, in fact, there's pushback and sometimes that, hey, you know, why, why are you doing this? The kids are not in school, they're not learning, and, but, I mean, I think it's really great that we support this, and, and we should be interested in quality over quantity anyhow, and I think that's what we're doing here. Rick, I was wondering, your, your experience, I mean, how does, how does what we're doing here compare with your own personal experience?
Well, I've had this conversation with Gina, and I really look forward to it every year. There's only so much time in a school year. You only can get so much stuff done in a PLC an hour before school on a weekday. So in the summer, we run classes taught by other teachers during school. So we're off, so you can sign up, like I already signed up for six classes in June, and then most of them are like the first two weeks after school or the first two weeks in August. They kind of, there are some in July, but people vacation, and they're classes taught by other teachers. The innovative teachers, the ones that really know Google, or the ones that are really found something great, they offer a half-day class. And then the newer teachers can get a little bit of incentive on the lane as far as credit goes, to kind of offset college credit, so they can take it for hours on the pay scale where they don't get paid, but then so many hours you move over in the pay lane. Or somebody like me, who, I've got two master's degrees, I take and they give me a stipend. Now, I would take this class for free, anyway.
We won't sell them that.
But I get, I get a stipend, and so it's not like, and then I have to submit a project, and I have to implement in my classroom. I have to show, I have to like verify that I just didn't come sit in a chair for eight hours. I'm taking this and I'm trying something, and then I submit it, and it'd be, my counterpart is Gina, that's who I would have to submit it to, that kind of umbrella it falls under. And it's, they started this probably about eight to 10 years ago, and it's just gotten bigger and bigger, and it's gotten, and teachers are more than happy to do it. And of course, they're getting, there's a stipend if you teach the class, but again, it's all monitored and, and people sign up, it's like concert tickets to get in some of the classes, because they only have so much room, and it's limited. And so then if something really sells out quick, they maybe will say, well, we'll offer it in August if the person wants to do it. Different strategies, Chris strategies that have been around, Reba strategies, you know, the Google, all the stuff that maybe an older teacher like me, I just, I mean, I don't have time to be sitting, or I don't know about it because I'm not hip and happening enough, and so, honestly, and I've had to, we've had that conversation a little bit here. This is kind of like that, but the school year is a school year, and it's tough. It's just really tough to do meaningful stuff, and that's where the summer kind of trickles in a little bit, you know, those, but again, it's the summer, you know, there's no, you don't have to come, and, but again, it's all voluntary at my school. And I personally appreciate it, I do, I, I take them.
So you see advantages to this versus what you're experiencing?
Yeah, what's nice is you're doing it in the school, so they're clearing out space. But we have PLCs, too, and so my PLCs are more for my science team, so we use that hour with other science teachers that teach chemistry to get everybody on the same page and try new stuff and next-generation science standards and all that. So that's what we use our PLCs for. And we have a few more institute days than you guys have.
You do.
So we have a couple more, but we go 108, 108, 208, 3 days. So we, our school, my school year's longer because of those extra days. So there's a give and take, you know.
Is there a way for us to copyright what we're doing here? Because this seems like.
Well, it's actually very funny because Hank and I stumbled across this email from Corwin, who was trying to sell us on this idea of PLC Plus, and we read the description and we both said, that's basically what we just designed.
We should have marketed, we should have branded it first.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Rob? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The amended calendar?
Speaking of institute days, we recently, well, a couple, actually, a couple of months ago, we met with our calendar committee to discuss the 2021 school year, and in that conversation, we revisited the 1920 school year. Typically, we would have brought this to the board much earlier, but there's been legislation moving very slowly through Springfield around the school days, so we've kind of held off on this, hoping that the legislation would be in place and we could follow the actual law. We've seen the draft law and the amendments, we believe these calendars will fit into what that legislation will be. One of the key changes is moving an institute day that we currently have that falls at the very end of the school year. So traditionally, we have had an institute day, the day after all students leave, we do an institute day. It's there because of some past state legislation that has gone away. Personally, I don't think the very last day before summer break is a great day to do in-depth thoughtful learning, nor do many other people, so we have proposed moving that day to the first day of the second semester. So similar to how we kick off the first semester with an institute day before, we kick off the second semester with an institute day there. So that's the only structural change. Otherwise, it mirrors everything we've done to this point. So I believe this comes back at the next board meeting, right?
Same plan for late start.
Same plan for late starts, you know, parent teacher conference, everything else kind of mirrors what we did this year. That's the only significant change.
Okay. Bond parameters and district auditors?
And Mark Stevens.
Mark.
Yeah.
The parameters bond resolution, there's, I'm going to try and keep mine shorter than Don Runner's on the board. No, actually, just four, four quick points.
I'm sure that this whole term.
I've got, that's what I said. I meant.
I forgot my pillow.
There's only like four major points here, and the next few things I have are just informational items, where there are going to be action items at the next regular board meeting. But interest rates, as you've heard me say, is down. We've shifted our, our plan to increase this issue once by $20 million, so originally it was going to be $40 million. Because interest rates are very attractive right now, we're, we've made it fit to go up to $60 million at this time and still have, be paid for that debt service and have room to plug in following debt service issuances that we're going to have over the next year. We've already, because interest rates are down, we've already been able to capture by what we've done with issuing this next bond, about $7.6 million of reduced costs for the bonds because of the interest rates have dropped. When Elizabeth Tennessee was here, you heard her discuss the possibility of going through the Illinois Finance Authority. We think we have a very good chance of getting that authority, which will give us state income tax exemption on the bonds as well as federal tax income exemption, and so that will add to it about another $600,000 of interest savings over the life of this and the other issues that we have. So we're very hopeful that we can do it for the next two as well. We haven't factored that into the cost yet, though, but that'll be the next mountain to try and get across, is issue the next one and get Illinois Finance Authority on that as well. They don't always do it on multiple issues, they figure they kind of spread the authority around and.
There's a positive result on that for the home, for our home.
For everybody. Right now, we're, even with giving some good pads to interest rates that they come back to normal rates, levels, we were, we're going to be totally $8.2 million down, and we're going to have, it's 60, I mean, we have a very big tax base, so all that sounds like a lot of money, and, but for an individual taxpayer, it's, you know, it's going from the 65 that we promised in the referendum to the 62, $62, you're saving $3 a year, you know, but.
That's good.
But what it does is.
Great direction, no, that's right.
What it does for us, right, it gives us room, really, if things go crazy, so it gives us more, more pads, and we're just trying to take advantage of as much as we can right now. And the key thing here is that this is a parameters, a resolution, we've used it in the past with a lot of success. Liz Hennessy and I will, and her company will sit there and will be negotiating with different bidders, they do most of that, but I'm there to balance things back, because we may change the structure of this issue, where they may find an investor that wants a certain pattern of debt structure, and we may restructure this a little bit. Somebody very likely, they're going to want a higher interest rate on the face of the bonds, and so even though we think our net cost is going to be very close to 2.7% for all-in costs, including all the costs of legal and issuance, 2.7%, they may want to see 4% or 5% on the bond face, and that means they will get a $5,000 bond, but they may have to pay $7,000 to get it, so that the interest that yields on the 5,000 part gives, gives us the 2.7 net cost. And that's what we'll be looking at with this one, we, we get a settlement on the day we negotiate, and also gives us some flexibility, we can go on a different day. Last, one of the bond issues we did in the past, there was, Chicago was dumping $1.2 billion worth of bonds on the market the same week, and so we just put it off a week to the, because everybody was going after those bonds at that time. Now, now Chicago couldn't probably pull it off, but, but we, we can, we have flexibility in that, so it was, it's all a really good system that we have in place. But we will have the board president, and also myself will have to sign off on that resolution when it comes, when, making sure that we follow the rules in this resolution. So that's why it says 5% here in the note, in the bond resolution, it gives us a range up to 5% for face value, but our net cost is still going to be very close to the 2.7 target that we have, unless interest rates just go south. But then we don't expect that in the next month or two. So that's why it's a parameters, it gives us some leeway to negotiate different, different structures for the bonds, and then investors then are more excited to come after our bonds because they know we'll move, move things around for them. So we're really excited about it, think it'll go well. Our closing date is June 27th, so that'll be probably towards the first couple of weeks of June when we actually negotiate and close a little bit later. So that's, that's when things will get exciting. And that's, that's about it. It's a complicated document, but I wanted to give you plenty of time to look it over in case you had any questions. We'll have an action item on the next board meeting to approve the resolution. Any questions at this point? All right, next, next two items are really just really more informational, but we will have action item at the next meeting. The auditor, we already have a five-year commitment from our auditor, but rather than have you approve five years in a row, I like to bring it each year to you so you understand that we have this firm and what the cost implications are. This is the second year of that five-year agreement, and the range for the next few years of their increase is between 2.3 and 2.5%, so they've locked in a nice low rate for us. Trust is firm, they're a good quality firm, they are able to get our CAFR done on time. A lot of firms can't do it and get it done in time, so we're very pleased with that firm. So I don't know if you have any questions about the auditor or anything there. This will be an action item for the next board meeting. Then the last item, if I can just jump ahead then, is the technology lease. We've been using a lease mechanism for funding these because the, this is for the Chromebooks for students and also the tablets for teachers and this other staff, and so we're getting ready to set up that lease again. We've had a good relationship with Wintrust, they're giving us a fair interest rate, they also have some support mechanism when it comes time to get rid of the equipment at the end of the lease. Most of our stuff is, there's nothing to get rid of, especially in the Chromebooks, those are typically worn out pretty well, and the ones that are good, we Frankenstein those and put together, use them for parts for the others, or use those for a loaner if a kid comes in and has forgot theirs, or they didn't charge it up, or something like that. And same thing with the tablets, we push them an extra year. And same thing with the tablets, we push them an extra year, just really for financial reasons, but, so we're, we are going to be, they're going to be at the end of their life pretty well, as well. We might be able to sell some of those, and that's what they're, help us with, they have connections in that area, so. So this again, will be another action item for the next one.
How much of a hit did that, loss of the bank qualified status?
You know, it wasn't too bad. If, this is 425, if it was bank qualified, it changed it a little bit, the, the bank qualified doesn't mean as much now because of the change in the tax law. The banks are, have a lower interest rate because of the, you know, they're up in the higher bracket levels, and so they have a lower rate with the Trump law change, interest rate changes, and so it's not as effective. So it would be just over 4%, would be 4.03 if we were able to give them the bank qualified piece, so normally would have been about 50 basis points, so it would have been maybe 3.75 if we, if we had it in the past, but now it's, it's not as valuable. So it really came at a good time when it, it lost its luster a little bit.
Okay.
So refresh my memory, have we been doing this for four years or?
No, we've been doing this, you mean, the whole program with Chromebooks?
Yeah.
Or, I think we're on our fourth year, you're right, I think.
So what was our?
Can remember better than me.
Yeah, first year was our first.
Yeah, I think we're a fourth year.
Okay, so what was our percentage of ones that lasted for four years?
Mine has lasted all four years.
Mine's also.
Which I'm very surprised of, because I know many people who are not the, you know, there's some people who I know the reason their key's missing and broken screen is because they're just not.
They abuse them.
But there are some people who definitely like the Chromebook just cannot handle four years of use.
So, I mean, what are the percentage? I mean, are, are we at?
Well, each year it changes, we have, we have four different models that we've been using, and so.
Yeah, I think each grade has different.
I think, I think the biggest thing is not just this getting them fixed, it's how long it takes. Like, there are people who.
Oh, to fix them.
Like, they'll turn in their broken Chromebook and it'll be like months before they'll ever see it back, if they ever see it back.
But they get them replaced.
But don't they get?
They get a user one.
They get a loaner, yeah.
Yeah.
It depends on when and how they do that. If it's under warranty, it has to be sent back to the factory to have it done, then it takes time and there's.
That's exactly. The ones we just bought this last year, you said.
They're a heavier model, and there's a slightly different model that we're going to use this year, the same, they do like that one, and they're recommending that, and we, they did say that repairs have gone way down on the newer ones.
On the freshmen.
On the freshmen.
I think your memo said that you're expecting with this, this batch we're about to buy, that we're hoping to get four years.
We might get four years out of the majority of them, yeah. And then we just can keep filling in with some of the older ones that, you know, we keep, so that would be the goal, get four years, and that's why we're actually, I'm proposing to do a four-year lease on this, before we're going to three-year leases, because we were having to replenish earlier.
So are we taking back the Chromebooks at the end of the four years? And so, so whatever's left, you know.
If it runs and still operates, it's, it's like a $20 machine, that's what the aftermarket is on, and if it doesn't run, then it's just for parts. There's very little, because the batteries and the keyboards are.
So Kirk, yours will become a loaner?
Yes.
Very likely.
If I can get all my stickers back off.
So, okay, all right, but, but we still don't know what the percentage is.
That survive?
Yeah, of survival.
No, this will be the, we have, this will be the first year we can actually evaluate the full, full life. Again, we keep changing the model, so.
Yeah, so.
It's fun to be the guinea pigs, you know?
Yeah.
It's a fun way to what?
It's fun, it's fun to be the guinea pigs with the Chromebook.
They buy about, about 40 or 50 spares.
Oh, okay.
Loans, and then when the machine goes out, and so them, those machines might not have been even put out until sophomore year for some of those kids if they, you know, with those screens broken and things, so it's a little tricky, but overall, we could get a pretty good estimate of these. Most of them went three years or three and a half years.
Oh, okay.
So I think is what the average was. We're expecting, we'd like to get four years out of the whole, yeah.
But if they're a sturdier.
I'd say it's three years before they have to start really servicing the heck out of them and get them going. And these guys did a great job, we really appreciate it.
For the, for the last month, you can kind of.
A few weeks left.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Well, moving on to the second reception of visitors, anybody wish to address the board to comment on anything? Hearing none, we're going to be moving into closed session. I'm going to be asking for a motion in a moment, but we will be returning with three action items, the support staff contract, personnel report, appointment certified, and personnel report resignation certified. If you want to wait, you're certainly welcome to. Other than that, we need a motion to go into collective, into closed session for the collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
So moved.
I'll second.
Terry and Mike.
Thank you. Terry Pavicich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Hi, we are in closed session, we'll meet in five minutes in the other room, we're here.